Five thirty. And away we go. Good evening, good afternoon. I'd like to call and order the special meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It's five thirty P M. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Dennison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Wiansky. Money.
Present.
Swam.
Present.
You have a corner.
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear a complaint and take commission action, if any, on the complaint filed against Commissioner Dan Wiansky alleging violations of the commission's rules of procedure, code of conduct and ethics, and misconduct and discrimination policy provisions as they apply to dealings with city staff and members of the public. This is a public hearing being held for the purposes just stated. Before a final, excuse me, before a final vote of the commission to consider what actions, if any, to take on the complaint, public comment only regarding the subject of this agenda will be accepted. One opportunity for public comment will be allowed to each person and limited to three minutes for each person. The person addressing the commission shall stand, state his or her name, and direct their comments directly to the commission. The chairperson may, at his discretion, terminate comments which exceed the three-minute limit or unrelated to the subject of the public hearing agenda or that are disruptive to the order of the hearing. When the chairperson observes that there are no further public comments, he or she shall close that portion of the hearing. At this time, I would like to present my charges and my exhibits supporting those charges. During the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, public meeting of the Buchanan Area Recreation Board, Mr. Wiansky addressed members of the public audience, which included African-American individuals using the phrases "you people" and "those people." This conduct resulted in the filing of a complaint with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights case six-three-five-eight-three-one. This complaint is still under review by the Civil Rights Department, has harmed citizen relations with the city, and caused the city to unnecessarily spend funds on attorney's fees responding to the complaint. Please find attached copies of the civil rights complaint, the attorney response, and the attorney billing for that response as evidence. At this time, I'd like to call James Busby as a witness.
Good afternoon. I'm James Busby. I live on Elizabeth Street on the north side. Back to the incident, I believe it was July tenth at the Buchanan Township Hall. There was the same evening as the incident between Dan Wiansky and Tony Howser earlier. The incident between myself and Dan Wiansky occurred, there was a private conversation between myself and Ms. Harris and Paige, I believe, where I was referring to getting some money together for Victory Park improvements. At that time, Mr. Wiansky rudely interrupted a conversation that was not pertaining to him, which he proceeded to tell me what I need to do with my own money. I told Mr. Wiansky the conversation was not pertaining to him, and if I wanted to take my money and throw it in the trash can, that was my business. Wiansky continued to talk. I then proceeded to ask Mr. Wiansky if he wanted to do something. Then why don't he stop being a sexist, using sexist language toward women? And I asked him to stop referring to minority groups as "those people" and "you people." I told him, "Everybody knows that's a racist term that's been used for years and years." Mr. Wiansky continued to laugh and thought it was funny. I didn't think it was funny. Mr. Wiansky then proceeded to tell me, in front of Ms. Harris and the other lady who was there, that he refers to all minority groups, Mexicans, Indians, whoever that's not white, as "you people." I asked him, "What do you refer to white people as?" He said, "Whatever I want to," and he laughed. Well, just as we, I turned to walk away and Ms. Harris and myself were going outside, the argument continued, in which I tried to ignore Mr. Wiansky. He then later got in my face, and he was literally shaking his fist ball, and he told me his exact words was, "He was a tough old white man, and I better watch my back." I turned to him and I told him, I said, "I'm a young, tough, black man, and don't you ever threaten me." And I said, "If you ever threaten me, you better hold true to it." And as that conversation was going on, Ms. Harris, Ms. Josetta Bibbs, John Brown, they kind of intervened because they didn't want altercation to erupt. The next day, I went and told Tim Gannus, Chief Tim Gannus, about the incident. He later forwarded the information over to the St. Joe Sheriff's Department, which they came down and interviewed me and interviewed several witnesses as to what happened at the incident. Mr. Wiansky gave a statement to the Sheriff's Department, which I think all of you have, in which his comment at the end, which he lied to me and said that I threatened to put him in the hospital. That conversation never took place. Anybody who knows me knows I will never put my hands on somebody unless I'm touched first, especially an old man that's on oxygen that just likes to run his mouth. Mr. Wiansky later told the Sheriff's Department, at the end of the day, that all white people are racist, pigs, and bigots, which you have a copy of the comment that he made. He made this comment, not me. Dan Wiansky made that comment, that all you white people are racist and bigots at the end of the day. I'm sure we're all smart enough to know that in Buchanan, every white person is not a racist. We have too many biracial kids running around. We have interracial couples of all races. I have two white grandkids of my own. I have two biracial. Latino in my family, Mexicans. We all know that all black people in Buchanan is not a racist. And as you all know, this isn't the first encounter with Mr. Wiansky I've had. Two summers ago, I had a little altercation with him, a verbal argument, and I told him then, you know, he's had women down here in City Hall in tears, and I've asked him repeatedly, you know, "Watch your mouth. Stop using that language toward minorities and women." He's had ladies down here in tears, that I'm sure all of you have witnessed at some point. The insults must stop. As a city commissioner, you represent not one race, but you represent everybody that's in Buchanan. We don't have to get along or like each other, but we need to respect and stop the insults. And I've tried to convey that to Mr. Wiansky, as several other people have tried to. When you are a commissioner, you represent, and we are supposed to be held to a higher standard. Just like that sign says, Buchanan life is better here, then when you have an individual like Mr. Wiansky that spurs hate in the language and the insults, what are we going to accomplish? If we're trying to do good things, we got one person constantly trying to tear everybody down. Nothing will get accomplished. This ain't the first time, like I said. And I believe when we were trying to, I was pushing to get the water fountain put back at the Victory Park before it did. I believe he had a conversation with Monroe LeMay where he referred to again as, "Those people don't need a water fountain." What does that ring when you hear somebody say stuff like that? The north side is not predominantly African-American anymore like it used to be, and I don't know if Mr. Wiansky is not smart enough to realize that, but it's not just a lot of white people has moved in. We've got other groups. We've got, I've seen Mexicans that's moved in, Hispanics, got a couple of Asians. So, once again, we need to go into a different direction. We need people who are going to show love and respect, and is going to put the community and the issues first, without trying to tear everything that we're trying to do down. And that's what I have to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Busby. Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Busby? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, James.
At this time, I'd like to ask John Brown to come forth as a witness, please. Mr. Brown, thanks for coming tonight. Can you, can you tell us, were you in the parking lot the night of that barb meeting when Mr. Wiansky and Mr. Busby had their altercation in the parking lot?
Yes, I was.
Can you tell us what you heard?
Well, most of the conversation was a back and forth between Mr. Busby and Mr. Wiansky and a lot of harsh words. Of course, I did stand by and make sure that the altercation didn't develop into something else, but I did hear Mr. Wiansky make the comments about he was a tough old man and he would he more or less threatened Mr. Busby, and the only thing I was more or less concerned was that Mr. Busby did not overstep and hit him, because that's what it was leading to. Because the ladies that were around, Mrs. Harris, Mrs. Bibbs, they all told me to step in and sort of squash it, but I tried to encourage them, let them know that Mrs. Busby was not going to, you know, take it that far. He was not going to assault or hit Mr. Wiansky. And of course, I had a few words with Dan afterwards, and, you know, I've known Dan a lot of years, and of course, his attitude was the same.
Did you hear Mr. Wiansky say anything that could be construed as racist?
Well, he did make that comment that, about you people and related to some of the park equipment that it was going to be taken out of Cartham Park, and of course, you know, "We'll give it to you people at Victory Park." And that set off a bad tone at that point in time in the, at the park board meeting. You know, that's the way it started.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, like I say, I've had, we sit in on a lot of the park board meetings over the last years, and I watched Mr. Wiansky put some of these ladies on the park board meeting in the tears. You know, Ashley walked out and quit. One of the other ladies walked out and quit because of Dan. And of course, that's what Mr. Busby referred to about his insensitivity towards women, and I talked to him and, you know, I was jokingly, you know, we were asking, "Mr. Wiansky, do you talk to your wife this way?" And of course, he said, "Yes."
Is there any, any questions from the commission for Mr. Brown? Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Thanks, John.
Okay, moving on to the second charge. On November third, twenty twenty-three, the city Buchanan mayor sent to all city commission members by text message a six-page complaint made by city employees against the city manager. The mayor specifically instructed each commission member to keep the employee's complaint confidential and that the complaints would be investigated by the city attorney. Mr. Wiansky disregarded the confidentiality directive by producing the complaint to the city manager and releasing a copy or content of the complaint to the public before an investigation could even be started. Although the employee complaints would be available to the public, release of the complaints before employees and the city manager could be interviewed risked impeding investigation of the complaints. The complaint has at least five allegations of misconduct against female employees. Mr. Wiansky's actions were acts of retaliation for the reporting of conduct and violation of the city's misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy. Please find attached, in your packets, printouts of my text messages asking for confidentiality, text messages from Mr. Wiansky to Mr. Eldridge, and a copy of the city's misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy and the city code of conduct. As commissioners, we have the responsibility to uphold the city's charter, ordinances, and policies. We don't get to pick and choose which ones we agree with. On page three of the misconduct, harassment, discrimination policy, it reads, "Upon submission of a complaint, an impartial and confidential investigation of the complaint will be undertaken by the city or such other agent as the commission or city manager may designate. The person against whom the complaint is filed will be notified of and provided with a copy of the complaint at the appropriate time." Mr. Wiansky has admitted to this charge on several occasions. At the eleven thirteen twenty-three meeting, Commissioner Wiansky stated, and I quote, "I did not release anything confidential. What I gave to the city manager is what this commission was going to railroad him out with," end quote. On eleven twenty-nine, at a city commission meeting, Mr. Wiansky said, "I did not give anybody confidential information. I gave him information that he was entitled to." Are there any questions from the commission on this charge?
I guess from the procedure, he's not here to ask the questions, too, but I would have asked Dan, why in this correspondence to the former city manager, he put, "Do you have a private email? I am working on something," to which the response was to send it to his wife's email. So I would have liked to get clarification on that communication, but that's all I would have asked.
Clerk Langston, can you, can you confirm that you did send Commissioner Wiansky all the materials necessary for this hearing that he knew of the hearing?
I did by email and mail on December fourth of twenty twenty-three, and I have copies of that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number three. After receiving written employee complaints on November third, twenty twenty-three, against the city manager, Mr. Wiansky stated to me that the complaints were just a bunch of retaliatory BS. This is a clear statement. Mr. Wiansky is completely not concerned with the investigation and resolution of complaints concerning possible civil rights violation, and this is a violation of the city's misconduct, harassment, discrimination policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, at this point, you're testifying to things from your personal knowledge, so you should be sworn in in the same manner as all other witnesses.
Okay. Okay. So, on page three of the misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy, it states, "Upon submission of a complaint, an impartial and confidential investigation of the complaint will be undertaken by the city or such other agent as the commission or city manager may designate. The person against whom the complaint is filed will be notified of and provided with a copy of the complaint at the appropriate time." At a city meeting on eleven twenty-seven, Commissioner Wiansky stated, and I quote, "When they were given to me, I did call them BS, because that's what they are. They're BS." At the conclusion of the eleven twenty-nine twenty-three meeting, I mentioned to Mr. Wiansky that he didn't understand his obligations and responsibilities to the city employees, and he stated repeatedly in front of myself and members of the press, and I quote, "I don't give a crap about the employees," end quote. Based on these statements and actions from Mr. Wiansky, it's clear to me that he has no intentions of upholding his obligations and responsibilities as a city commissioner, even after signing the code of conduct acknowledgement form and taking an oath of office. In your packet, you'll find the code of conducted acknowledgement signed by Mr. Wiansky. It reads, "I hereby acknowledge that I have received a copy of the city Buchanan's code of conduct, and that I have further read and understand the same. I also acknowledge that I have been given a physical copy of the code of conduct to keep for my records, and that I understand that I may ask my supervisor if I ever have any questions about the code of conduct. I understand that if I fail to comply with any part of the code of conduct, I may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination, as is deemed appropriate," signed by Mr. Wiansky. Any questions from the commission on this charge? Okay. Number four, do you have them?
No, I'm just trying to read through this stuff. Sorry.
Number four, "On the morning of November eighth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Wiansky entered the city hall office and confronted city bookkeeper Courtney Bayham and clerk Calla Langston over their involvement in the employee complaints filed against the city manager. The employee complaint contains allegations of misconduct against female employees. This incident was reported to the Marion County Sheriff's Department, where the incident is being investigated. Mr. Wiansky's actions were acts of retaliation for the reporting of conduct and violation of the city's misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy." Please find attached copies of the Marion County Sheriff's Office report and statements from witnesses in City Hall. Page three of the misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy reads, "The city not only prohibits abuse, discrimination, and harassment as set out in this policy, but also strictly prohibits any retaliation against any covered individual who, in good faith, has submitted a complaint under this policy or who has participated in an investigation under this policy. Any covered individual who, after investigation, is found to have engaged in retaliation prohibited under this policy will be subject to such appropriate corrective action as the city has authorized in its sole discretion to implement." At this time, I'd like to call city clerk Calla Langston as a witness. Mr. Derby, if you could read her.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Good evening. On Monday, November seventh, following the joint water sewer board meeting, Commissioner Wiansky entered my office while I was putting my work away from that meeting and closed my office door. He expressed that he was upset about the list of employee concerns regarding the former city manager that he had received from Mayor Dennison and questioned my involvement. In this exchange, Commissioner Wiansky was audibly aggressive and irritated about the suspension of the former city manager. He confirmed that he gave the former city manager the list of concerns and to a member of the public. Commissioner Wiansky visited City Hall two days later on November eighth. He inquired about a phone number with the front desk staff and asked if I was in. Upon hearing him speaking to another employee, I exited my office because I was concerned about any employee getting cornered by Commissioner Wiansky due to the aggressive behavior he demonstrated on Monday. I saw Commissioner Wiansky in the bookkeeper's doorway. I approached and asked, "How can I help you?" At that point, Commissioner Wiansky went into the bookkeeper's office, slammed her door with only the two of them inside. Myself and other staff members insisted that he open the door. At the time, the bookkeeper's door was broken. It locked automatically and could not be opened from the outside. After a few moments, he did open the door and left the bookkeeper's office. Commissioner Wiansky and I had a verbal altercation about his actions. It was clear to me that he was not coming down here for just a phone number. He was coming down to intimidate and interrogate other staff members, just as he had done two days prior to me. His behavior in the workplace was disruptive, combative, and invasive. He routinely intimidates, harasses staff, the public, and his fellow commissioners when he disagrees or opposes them, both professionally and personally. This is part of a pattern of behavior Commissioner Wiansky has continued to demonstrate. I have had a good working relationship with Commissioner Wiansky in the past, but since I opposed him, I have now been targeted by him. He has degraded me in public meetings, as well as calling another jurisdiction looking for complaints against me and tearing down relationships I have built with the public.
Anybody have any questions for Clerk Langston?
A question for Mr. Derby. How procedurally, for the public and for our education, is the city commission supposed to interact with the city manager and the staff? What's the hierarchy, and is that question making sense, actually?
You mean on a routine basis?
Yeah. What should our expectation be?
The best practice is that any concerns that the commission have should go through the city manager, and the city manager deal with the staff.
And our rule is more policy-driven, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong about you coming and asking for a document or something like that.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to, at this time, call the city bookkeeper Courtney Bayham as a witness.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Bayham. I'm the bookkeeper here at City Hall, and I'm here tonight to give a statement on the incident between Commissioner Wiansky and myself. On November eighth, Commissioner Wiansky came into City Hall. After a few minutes, he came over to my office and stood in the doorway with the intention of questioning the allegations about the former city manager. I was already on edge from the entire situation. When Calla came around and calmly asked him how she could help him, he slammed my office door, which left me and him in it. Knowing how Commissioner Wiansky behaves and hearing the verbal altercation that took place with Calla and Commissioner Wiansky on Monday, I was uncomfortable being alone in his presence. When asked to leave, he did so. Following this incident, I was vitally shaken up and was unable to continue working through the day. This had, this has made myself and team members fearful of coming forward with concerns in the future due to the retaliation that has taken place by Commissioner Wiansky. We no longer feel as if we have a safe working environment. His behavior has furthermore deteriorated the way the public views the city and its staff, who are working diligently to reverse the damage created by previous administration.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. These charges are filed against Commissioner Wiansky under the city, the city's rules of procedure for city commission meetings, code of conduct and ethics ordinance, and the city's misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy. Depending on the factual findings of the commission, if support is found for one or more of the above charges, the city council may take one or a combination of the following actions. One, to accept and vote on a motion whether or not to adopt a resolution of censure. If two or more independent findings of misconduct and officer found based on the above charges, vote whether or not to adopt a resolution of censure that includes a request for the commissioner's resignation from office. And three, take a commission vote on a resolution requesting Commissioner Wiansky to resign from his position as a city commissioner. If Commissioner Wiansky refuses to resign after a request for resignation from office, the commission may take any legal action necessary to terminate the commissioner's right to remain seated commissioner, including a resolution for the filing of charges with the governor of the state of Michigan, requesting an action for the removal of the commissioner from office under M C L one sixty-eight three-two-seven. At this time, we will take public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Alan Robant, one fourteen East Front Street. There are a couple of things that were said tonight that I've kind of questioned. The city had an incident policy that employees were supposed to follow if they had a complaint. I don't think any incident policy, any incident reports were ever filed on any of this. To retaliate, you would have to know who the accusers were. To the best of my knowledge, there were no signatures on the forty-two charges. So to say that Dan was somehow retaliating against people So to say that Dan was somehow retaliating against people is kind of a fallacy. I don't see how you can retaliate when you don't know who you would be retaliating against. Ben Eldridge was not the public. Ben Eldridge was the city manager. I think that's a distinction that needs to be made. Releasing the information to the city manager, a city employee, is different from releasing it to the public. And then finally, how do you investigate forty-two anonymous complaints? That's all I've got to say.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
My name is Monrola May. I'm from one eighteen Shimmer Parkway. We pledge allegiance to the flag at the beginning of every meeting. You will note that the last sentence is "with liberty and justice for all." This means that we treat everyone the same where justice is concerned. The first charge against Commissioner Viancy has to do with stereotyping a group of people, and in this case, it's African Americans, as you people or those people. If you're going to bring up charges against one person, you should also include all the other persons on the commission who are guilty of the same action. One city commissioner, sitting among you, told a businesswoman in Buchanan in conversation that she was one of the original FIPs in town. For those of you who do not know what the acronym FIP stands for, it is Fucking Illinois People. I myself have heard more than one of you sitting up there refer to the downtown merchants as Chicago pansies or faggots. If you are ready to bring charges against one, you must consider charging all. The second charge deals with Commissioner Dan Viancy sharing confidential information with an employee, then-city manager Ben Eldridge. On Tuesday, following the city manager's suspension by Mayor Dennison, a citizen of Buchanan called me to ask me to please back away from the issue, not get involved, and remove my post about the suspension from Facebook. He proceeded in his conversation to tell me that this would really harm the employees who filed these grievances. He knew of the number of grievances and those who made those complaints. I asked this individual how he knew this, and since I was not allowed to know, and he replied that because his company gives money to the city, he needs to know these things and therefore, information gets shared with him. So, someone on this commission is sharing information, confidential information, the same information that Commissioner Viancy shared with Ben Eldridge with a regular citizen business, business owner. Once again, if you are ready to bring charges against one, you must consider charging all for the same, same action that has been taken place today, "with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, say no one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is a point of order before you proceed to discussion. It should be, again, noted for the record that the clerk did in fact serve Mr. Viancy with the charges and notified him of the date and time of this hearing, both by email and by regular mail, and that he's failed to appear. And had he been here, he would have been able to defend himself, have witnesses present, have representation if he so desired, and question and be questioned, and he has forfeited that. And I think that should be noted.
Thank you. Okay. On charge number one, I would entertain a motion that Commissioner Viancy has either committed or not committed misconduct in office. Is there a motion?
I would make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes. Okay, on charge number two, I'll entertain a motion that Commissioner Viancy has either committed or not committed misconduct in office. Is there a motion?
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
On charge number three, I'll entertain a motion that Commissioner Viancy has either committed or not committed misconduct in office. Is there a motion?
This is Money, I'd solemn move.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
On charge number four, I will entertain a motion that Commissioner Viancy has either committed or not committed misconduct in office. Is there a motion?
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Since at least two charges of misconduct have...
Mr. Mayor, may I hear you say just for a second? I thought in the last call for the question, you asked whether or not he had committed misconduct. The question should be posed and the motion should be whether anyone wants to bring a motion of an offense or nonoffense for each one of these, so the record is more clear. Do you understand what I...
I do. So, so the motions would be...
So you could, you could ask whether or not anybody has a motion as to whether or not misconduct or conduct, misconduct did or did not occur, but the form of the motion has to be...
I would make a motion that the commissioner... I understand.
Or not, and then proceed with the, with the second, entertain discussion, and then vote.
You want us to go back through all four?
I would, please.
Okay. Let's go back to charge number one. I apologize, who made that motion?
Whedon, or sorry, Money made the first one.
Money made the first one. Mr. Money, would you like to restate your motion?
I would. Yep.
Would you like to make the motion that he did in fact commit misconduct in office?
I will make the motion that Commissioner Viancy did ship, did show misconduct while in office.
Thank you, and still support that?
Yep.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes. Okay, and then going down to charge number two, on the complaint against Mr. Viancy sharing confidential information. Does anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that he violated city ordinance.
And conducted misconduct.
And conducted misconduct in office.
Okay, is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
Money supports that one.
Can we have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, going down to number three, charge number three, I believe that was Mark. Did you make that one?
Yep, I'll make a motion, I'm sorry, Cal.
It was Larry first.
Oh, that was Larry?
It's fine, we can...
Go ahead, Mark.
All right, I'll make a motion that he had misconduct, had misconduct on charge number three while in office.
Thank you, is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, and then charge number four, I believe that was Commissioner Whedon, who made that motion, would you like to make?
On charge number four, I believe he made misconduct while serving in office as a commissioner.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Since at least two charges of misconduct have been agreed upon by this commission, I would entertain a motion for a resolution of censure to be presented and discussed at our next regular meeting, and a request for Mr. Viancy's resignation. If Mr. Viancy refuses to resign, I would ask this commission's approval to take any and all action necessary to terminate Mr. Viancy's right to remain a city commissioner, including contacting the state attorney general and the governor. I would entertain a motion to, to, to be allowed to do that if, if this commission will let me.
A motion to proceed with the resolution as stated.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to close this hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Your turn.
Thank you.